Good afternoon and welcome to the Glendale Economic Development Corporation’s Meeting of December 9, 2014. May we have a roll call, please?
Board members, divine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Jarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Sonanion.
Here. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for the December 9, 2014 Special Public Meeting of the Economic Development Corporation was postponed on Friday, December 5, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item before you is Directors of Community Services and Parks and Economic Development regarding funds received from GUSD for Regional Career Pathways Project. One is a resolution appropriating $286,350.
Thank you. Ms. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. We wanted to take this opportunity to have Mr. Duran and Mr. Nakamoto come up and talk about the WIB because we are in the midst of quite a bit of movement and some very interesting and positive developments as they pertain to workforce development. And all that the WIB does for us, you’ve also heard a great deal being discussed in terms of preparation of the workforce, continuing education, and we’re very glad to say that through our partnership with the GUSD, we have an exciting, unique opportunity to appropriate funds, albeit not today by our mistake. The appropriation will come at your December 16 meeting, but we do want to overview, give you an overview of the WIB and this particular program specifically. So with that, we’ll have Mr. Duran introduce the topic. Jess?
Mr. Sonanion, members of the council, I’m going to call Mr. Nakamoto, who has a slide presentation and will give you a very broad overview and background on the current status of the WIB and everything that the WIB is working on. But as it pertains to this particular agenda items, the Career Pathways Project, to me, is very much a microcosm of the overarching need in workforce development, not only in our region but across the country, to fill the skills gap between the needs of employers and the workers that are available. And if we can make headway in closing that gap, we can attract and retain high-tech entertainment-related business to our region and to Glendale. So we want to take this opportunity to review the current status of workforce development and the major initiatives that the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board is working on under the jurisdiction of the city council as the administrative agent and in partnership with the city of Burbank. So with that, I’m going to call it Mr. Don Nakamoto.
Thank you, Jess. Good afternoon, Mayor Sonanion and to the council members. Let’s see. I know Councilman Ngerian has asked in the past for some background again and a little refresher about the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board, so I’ll just give a brief explanation about the organization. The Verdugo WIB was formed actually going back over 30 years, 1983, through a joint powers agreement between the cities of Glendale, Burbank, and La Cañada, Flint Ridge, to create a federally approved economic and workforce development area to qualify for federal and state funding. The city of Glendale was chosen as the administrative agent. Actually, the mayor of Glendale serves as the chief local elected official under that The role of the WIB, there’s three basic roles. One is overseeing the budget. We have around a $5 million a year budget of state and federal funding. A big part of our organization is getting competitive grant funding, so we get through a year maybe about five or six competitive grants, and through the years, maybe the last dozen years, we’ve gotten over 70 grants. The other part of our mission is to service basically two customers: job seekers in the Glendale, Burbank, and La Cañada area that are seeking careers and jobs, and also employers to help meet their needs, their workforce needs for quality employees. The final thing that the WIB focuses on is policy development, and I’ll get into a little bit more detail about that particular role. We have a board of directors on the WIB, 32 members. Majority of the members are executives at corporations within our region, and these are executive-level leaders that form our board. My responsibility as the executive director of the WIB and as administrator of workforce development in the city is to try and identify some of the key economic and workforce events that are occurring, the trends that are occurring, and convey that to our board so they understand some of the key economic issues that are happening in our community. It’s then the responsibility of the WIB staff and the staff at the Verdugo Job Center to carry out these initiatives to address certain issues and problems that exist in our community. Entities like Glendale Community College have relied on the initiatives and the trends that we develop to, for example, help develop their long-term plan, strategic plan, and also develop new programs for the college. Just to give an example of some of these initiatives that have occurred over the years, in the entertainment industry, which is the largest industry in Glendale, Burbank, and La Cañada, the industry was making a transition to digital technologies in the last dozen years or so. So the WIB played a key role in acquiring funding, about $6 million of funding, to train about 2,500 of the industry’s top professionals in the region. People within the industry say that this had a major impact in keeping jobs here locally because producers often look at the quality and the skill of the workforce that they’re doing projects in. Another key industry is the healthcare industry, which is the largest industry in Glendale. Years ago, we found that the city had one of the worst nursing shortages in the state. There were between 400 to 500 unfilled nursing openings in the state, so the WIB went after and received a few million dollars of training funds from the governor’s office and also some federal funding to help train new nurses. We trained about 100 new nurses for the hospitals and also trained 200 additional nurses that were already working in the hospitals to upgrade their skills to fill specialty areas. One of the areas we’ve been focusing on recently is manufacturing. We recently invested $150,000 into trying to turn around manufacturing companies. We feel that the industry is really undergoing a renaissance and has an opportunity to really make an impact in terms of employment and the training area. We launched a project that assisted 18 Glendale and Burbank companies and were able to save 130 jobs from being laid off and create another 24 jobs. This project was mentioned, one of our company’s Accurate Dial in Glendale was mentioned in a White House study in 2014 by Vice President Biden as a best practice in terms of helping to turn around companies and save jobs. The WIB was also nominated by the U.S. Department of Commerce for National Award as Manufacturing Advocate of the Year.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So how do you help them? I mean, how do you keep them from laying people off? What kind of assistance can you give companies to do that?
Just as an example, I know a couple things. The consultant that we hired, when, they go in and do a very in-depth analysis financially and also on the status of the company, and they take a look at where the company could make improvements. So one of the things they focused on, on local companies in Glendale, Burbank, was the fact that most of their products were targeted toward the domestic market, and so if they were able to achieve certain international certifications, they’d be able to access a much larger market, an international market. So they did a number of training and consulting to help a lot of these Glendale, Burbank companies achieve those certifications. They also took a look at things such as sales and marketing to get more of their product out into the marketplace, the efficiency of their workforce, and whether they were really achieving a lot of productivity. So it’s kind of a wide-ranging list of areas that they take a look at and then implement improvements in.
The consultancy aspect of it is really very important because, as you know, so many of the smaller and medium-sized businesses are spending all of their efforts chasing that nickel, and building the better business is usually something that falls to the back end, and part of our goal is to make sure, part of Phil Lanzabame’s goal as well, along with Don and Jess, is to make sure that all of our businesses are aware of the services we provide because we can help build that better, build that better business.
So how do you, I mean, as I don’t think most businesses know you offer assistance to them, they think you offer assistance to people who are looking for jobs and job training.
Right.
What kind of assistance do you offer and how can they find out about it?
We have staff that routinely go out to companies to let them know about the services that we provide to the employers. Also, by law, any employer that lays off 50 or more workers, we have to intervene and provide assistance to the employer and also to the affected worker. So through the years, we’ve gotten a lot of connections with employers through that means, and let them know about the services that we have available. But it really is a two-way process because not only are we helping the job seekers in the community get employment, but we also want to make connections to the employers so we know what job openings are out there, so we can make a much better connection between the job seeker and the employer.
So if a small business thinks that they might be able to use your services, who do they contact and how do they contact them?
That would be through the Verdugo Job Center, and they can call down to the office on 1255 South Central Avenue, and we have staff, that’s our business services staff, that’s dedicated to that, that area.
And we also go a little bit, I’m sorry, ma’am, just on the proactive side from, you know, the customary chambers of commerce, but also through the integration with our Economic Development Department. As we do the outreach that Phil and his team are doing, we’re promoting the WIB. As we do our broker incentives, as we do those types of CEO roundtable discussions, we’re promoting the WIB. And so at high and low, tactical and strategic, we’re trying to make sure we integrate the same message and people understand that. We’re making those inroads, luckily, finally at this point. We’re very happy to see that people are taking advantage of the services.
And while you’re answering a question, you keep saying, “We train, we train, we train nurses, we train technology.” Who is the “we”? I mean, what, how does that happen, the education’s part of this?
Right. Primarily, we fund the training that occurs. So we work in the community with a lot of different partners. For example, Glendale Community College is a very close partner of ours, so we identify areas that have needs for trained workers. We work together with a college or other private training vendors and provide the funding to do the actual training. So we do recruitment of people in the community that may be unemployed or underemployed and that would be qualified to go into certain types of training.
Okay.
And provide that training.
And then you, you actually provide the funds?
Yes.
For the, for college and the training?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
On the particular grant that you’re voting on, this is the Career Pathways Grant, one of the reasons we got involved in this grant is that we started to see issues within our employers where employers within the Glendale, Burbank area were sending jobs or work overseas or other states. They were doing recruitments of workers from overseas, and so that was a bit alarming to us that there didn’t seem to be a real focus on trying to get a lot of local unemployed workers in our community back into those type of jobs. So that’s one of the reasons, you know, some people were saying, “Why are you getting involved in education? That’s not really your job,” but in fact, it is. If our employers are having trouble finding the qualified workers that they need, then we have to start at the K through 12 level and really help to focus education on where the future demand is going to be in our community for the, the types of industries and jobs that we have that are growing. So that’s one of the reasons we really got involved in the Career Pathways area, and these are just some of the explanations of why we really focused on that area. The other thing that’s fairly alarming to us is that we could see this trend that there’s an increasing pool of low-skilled workers in this country, and it also affects Glendale, Burbank, and a shrinking pool of those type of low-skill jobs. But on the other hand, there’s an increase in the number of very high-skill jobs that are occurring in this country, but we don’t have enough people to fill those jobs. So as a country, you’re going to start running into some real issues, and the same thing’s going to happen in the Glendale, Burbank area in the future.
And you’re seeing that matriculate now into the school system where now our middle schools, for example, at Toll Middle School, next year, a woodworking shop program will actually be re-instituted there at the school and have the continuation at the high school across the street.
And I, if I may, I was just going to, I made some notes, and I said that not every child or not every student is college-bound or wants to go to college. So they all need a technical job that they can go be trained for. And I was also thinking in my mind that a lot of this is due to the schools having to wipe out or knock out these technical, the wood shop, the automotive, the mechanic classes, et cetera, that the kids are not able to be trained in those, those sorts of skills where they are job-ready when they graduate.
It would seem that’s absolutely right. We’ve gotten to the point where maybe we’re coming full circle where everybody had to be college-bound. And in fact, the redefinition of that equation perhaps should have been and is becoming now, everybody needs to be post-secondary education-bound. So for some, it’s going to mean university and college; some, it’s going to be trade school; some is going to be certification. It is almost impossible to do some of the, the technical jobs that you can raise a family on still, and those, and they still exist in this economy today without some post-secondary education. But it doesn’t have to be a four-year. You’re absolutely right.
Yeah, it’s totally correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Weaver?
I was listening to Charles Osgood this morning on the radio. In New York, for an example, they have a light of returning veterans that cannot get employed. They just don’t have any skill factor. This nonprofit has come in and has put together schools where these veterans are getting technical training, everything, restoring their self-esteem, and now they’re eligible to get jobs because of technology today is so greatly needed.
Mm-hmm.
But that’s happening in New York right now.
Yeah, it’s, it’s going to become a huge issue in the future because we still have a major influx of veterans that are coming back and...
Yeah, they went into the service probably when they were 18, full of glory, go out and whip up the enemy, and they come back and they don’t have the collegiate skills or some, I don’t know if they all have to finish high school to get into the military, but times have changed, just in the time they’re in the military.
Yeah, we’ve actually gotten three grants from the state to assist veterans to help re-employ them in our community, and we have right now a grant to assist female veterans because they’ve really been the forgotten heroes. They’re, they’re just not accessing the assistance in the community that they need, so we’re trying to aggressively go out and locate them to, to assist them. Back to Career Pathways. So when we saw this, this situation, a Department of Education grant came out, and we pulled together partners from Glendale Unified, Burbank Unified, Glendale College, Cal State Northridge, to team with us in going after funding to help create a program that focuses on vocational areas within the schools and creates a real path from the eighth-grade level all the way through a four-year degree. And so we, we led that consortium, we wrote most of that grant, we were able to get $6 million to, to bring into the Glendale and Burbank schools to, to create these pathway And I’ve talked about some of these goals already, just trying to create the skilled workforce for our employers in the future, but also to help our youth focus on the, the correct areas. You hear so many stories about people that are getting degrees in social service areas or other just general education areas, and they aren’t really that useful and don’t lead to employment. So we want to play the role of trying to focus our youth on where the, the career and employment opportunities, opportunities will be in the future. We’re also working on some other initiatives. We have another Career Pathway program in the works with Glendale Unified, and as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, Toll Middle School and Hoover High School. This is a resurrection of their automotive training program, so hopefully we get that grant, and it would focus on the alternative fuels area of automotive. We also have developed a, an initiative related to the technology jobs and specifically focusing on the high growth of technology jobs that have occurred on the West Side and how we can help train a workforce that can access those type of positions. And as you may have heard, we’ve also been asked by the city of Burbank to assist them in the development of a training center related to their portion of the Career Pathway funding that focuses on either the entertainment area or the advanced manufacturing area. Councilman Ngerian had asked, I think in past meetings, for a little update about what’s happening with our particular industries, where the jobs are being created, and so I think Mayor Sonanion had also asked something along those lines. So we’ll provide a little bit of information about each of the sectors, the major sectors in the Glendale economy, and also what’s happening with the job situation. These are the, the major industries in Glendale: healthcare, these are by employment; retail is the second-largest; manufacturing is still the third-largest; a lot of people are surprised by that fact; professional and technical services, that would be things like law firms, accounting firms, architectural firms, firms that provide service, technical services to the, the community; accommodations, food services, those are hotels and restaurants. Entertainment is really a mystery at this point, even though we have two very large entertainment employers in the city, we don’t get access to their employment numbers, so it’s really difficult to tell. If I was to guess, I would say they’re probably number four behind manufacturing. The healthcare industry in our community, Glendale’s very fortunate to have three major hospitals in the city. That’s a fairly unusual economic occurrence. We also have over 700 doctor and dental offices just within the city. It’s a, a huge hub economically for the city. But the industry is undergoing a lot of change due to Obamacare and face a lot of issues. For example, the hospitals face the loss of $300 billion nationally of Medicare funding due to Obamacare. But on the other hand, studies that we have done indicate that there’ll probably be over 100,000 new uninsured patients that are eligible for medical insurance within the Glendale, Burbank, La Cañada area but also adjacent to our region. So that’s going to generate more demand for services and more jobs in the healthcare Healthcare weathered the storm pretty well. It only fell by about 5%. Well, it’s actually grown by 5% in the economic recovery. The, the entrance of USC through Verdugo Hills Hospital into the economy is a huge event. They bring a lot of resources and potentially a lot more services into the region and a lot more growth possibilities. The other really positive aspect about healthcare is that they draw people from outside of the region for services into our medical hub, which is a big economic bonus as well.
And on that last point, I think that’s where you’re seeing the desire of a number of our hospitals to aggregate the hospital and the medical offices around them, near their campuses. So Adventis recently, as you recall, went through the medical office overlay zone, the creation of that zone around their campus. Memorial is doing that as well. We’re expecting that at some point. They’re somewhat isolated, but USC Verdugo will come and do that same thing, and they’ll just begin to build around themselves these, these, as Don dubs it, these hubs, these little villages of, of medical office all around them, and it’s incumbent on us, I think, to help them further that because it builds a stronger medical community. And with the anomaly of having three hospitals, we’re in the medical business at this point.
Retail, some of these, some of the data that we look at is a little bit deceptive. It looks like there was very little employment change from prior to the start of the recession to now, but what actually occurred is that Americana opened up at the start of the recession, created a lot of jobs, and it kind of offset all the other jobs that were being lost in the retail sector. Retail’s rebounded pretty strongly from the recession. It’s up about 21% in the city, led by the car sales that are occurring. The dealerships are doing really well. Some things to consider over the long term, there’s a really strong trend in place where retail sales are moving away from the brick-and-mortar sales, and a lot more is occurring through the internet, which is a bit of a concern for our retail companies locally.
Considering that, and also 1% of our, the sales tax, the 1% point-of-sale that retail generates is the second-largest chunk of our general fund revenue.
The other thing to keep in mind is that retail is greatly influenced by the health of the economy. The average economic recovery is about, I think, 4.8 years, and so we’re already at about 5 and 1/2. This is a different type of recession that we dealt with, so the type of recession that we were in tends to have longer recoveries, so it may not be something that you should be overly concerned about, but this is something to, to keep in mind. Manufacturing suffered pretty badly during the recession, losing about a third of its jobs, but in the recovery, it’s had an amazing recovery. 60% of the jobs, we’ve had a 60% increase in employment from the depth of the recession to, to today. So one of the reasons for that is that we’re becoming more competitive with what’s happening in China. Two-thirds of the project, products that are imported from China can actually be manufactured competitively in the U.S. now. But it’s an interesting situation because a lot of the small and medium-sized manufacturers in this country are actually not prepared to take back a lot of that work. They don’t have the infrastructure or the skilled labor to take back some of that work. L.A. is the largest manufacturing center in the country, and so Glendale enjoys part of the benefit because of that large presence in our city. Entertainment, as I mentioned, it’s hard to gauge what the true size of this industry is, but we are very fortunate to have two key players, not only in traditional entertainment but the type of entertainment that the industry is moving toward, which is more internet-based, mobile-type of entertainment. So we have the Disney Creative Campus and DreamWorks here within the city, and these two companies, as well as future growth in that area, are really going to drive the, the employment for probably decades in the city. That’s going to be the primary industry area that drives future employment growth within the city. The biggest by far economic trend that we see happening within the region, and within the world actually, is that this once-in-a-lifetime technology advancement, as we see it, where technology has really become mobile. Everybody’s accessing data and communicating through the internet and mobile. And I highlighted this one particular point through an IBM study. 90% of the world’s data has been created just in the last two years. So if you think about all the implications of that whole thing, it’s affecting... So, if you think about all the implications of that whole thing, it's affecting every industry and so, so much of our economy, something to really keep in mind going forward. How is the city most impacted by this technology? Entertainment content in Southern California, the development of that content is really one of the things that's driving all the job growth on the West Side, all the transplant of companies, these big tech companies, over into the Silicon Beach area. The good thing is that Disney and DreamWorks are also moving in that direction. They're trying to figure out their formula for success and being a big presence on mobile and the internet. So, there are a lot of opportunities in that area going into the future. Mr. Sananyan had asked me, I think at some gathering in the community, about the whole tech area and how Glendale could take advantage of that, and any suggestions to take advantage of that. And as I mentioned, trying to capitalize on the presence of those two companies, I think, is really key because there's an economic phenomenon called clustering where if you have two major anchors, or I'm sorry, just a major anchor in your community, there's a tendency for smaller companies to gather around or establish a presence around that major prime company in order to access business, to collaborate. And so, to take advantage of that economic phenomenon, I think, would be an important strategy. So, trying to align with the specialty areas that those major companies have and maybe target some startups or smaller companies that might be interested in moving into the city, that might be an important area to take a look at. One of the things about Glendale that's not that great a positive is that there's not very much presence of traditional technology companies within Glendale. There's also a lack of presence of biotech companies, which are probably two of the big growth areas in the U.S. economy in future years. Mr. Ochoa has, and Mr. Lanzipam have started looking into the possibility of doing some development and kick-starting some of those areas, possibly in the form of developing local incubators that could help grow startup companies in those areas. Those are fairly high-risk ventures, but they could reap some benefit. Biotech, there are a lot of companies or a lot of ideas that are developing out of our universities, USC, UCLA, Caltech, that could potentially develop into companies. Currently, a lot of that work is going, people develop ideas or companies or startups, then go to other states or other countries. There's a lot of potential for trying to harness that and put it in our community. The only hang-up there is that you probably have to create a laboratory space. It wouldn't be just office space. You'd have to transform something into laboratory space to appeal to the biotech companies.
Economic Alliance of San Fernando Valley in the past few years has talked at length about the biotech industry. It's scattered all over the valley. It has no one clustering place. To me, there was a space. It wasn't in Glendale, but it borders on Glendale, which would mean a lot of highly-paid professionals working there would probably live in Glendale. That area hasn't developed. I certainly didn't know who to turn to to generate it. I can mention it to you sometime.
Yes, sir. And that is the idea, is to be able to find a location where you can locate incubator office and wet lab space with the three, taking advantage of the three natural benefits we have by way of our hospitals. And at the same time, we can do the same thing with information tech, primarily in the, in the entertainment industry, with the two studios. And you have the motherships and you build the clusters around them. It will take an investment from the city, I think, to establish that framework, but the idea being that once you create the incubator, we can then find the types of companies to populate and hopefully develop a culture where the word of mouth leads the next commercialized technology to come and work in our, in our facility, in our incubator. That is what's really, we're trying to further flush out that idea now with Dawn and with Phil. I think that we have, as I say, just a head start by virtue of the medical industry presence in our community. But it will take an investment, and we're trying to put our arms around what that cost is.
But if you do create the cluster, in essence, you create a campus where buildings were all tied together, all doing a similar type of work. Another is the robotics program that you find in the elementary schools. Glendale Community College has now got certified to do training there. I put up in contact with Phil Zern because they're interested in doing something involving landfill, whatever. But robotics is going to become a very big ticket item at Glendale Community College in the years to come. You don't want to get behind the curve on robotics.
That's it for my presentation. If you have any other further questions?
As we had indicated on the front end, this is as much a primer, an overview for the benefit of the council. There was an appropriation for the grant. Unfortunately, that should be as a joint Economic Development Corporation and City Council meeting. This is just an Economic Development Council meeting, so we will bring back to you that appropriation at your December 16th meeting, if it pleases the council. But absent that, then we would transition to the next item.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last item on the agenda, Mr. Quill?
That was the only item on this agenda, Mr. Quill.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We're adjourned at 2:16 P.M.
Thank you.